I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, March 11th, 2015. It's the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education Meeting. Wonderful night tonight that we have, so I'm surprised we have anybody in the audience, but we do. So, thank you for coming. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langill.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We don't have any bright lights this evening, so we'll roll right into the recognitions. Mrs. Hedstrom, I think we have a couple of recognitions this evening.
Yes, we do. This is always my favorite part. I get to do some fun things, and this is one of them. So, tonight, I am pleased to present an Employee Recognition Award. This is actually a recognition award from last month, February 15. It's being presented this evening to LeAnn Dominic. LeAnn, would you please join me? Thank you. Okay. LeAnn started with the school district in 2002.
Wow.
And she is the Assistant Principal-Secretary at West High School. LeAnn's nominators tell us that LeAnn goes above and beyond in every aspect of her job. She gets the three West High School Assistant Principals in the right place at the right time.[134.01][134.01](Laughter). And is a constant source of new and creative ideas for the West students. She is a driving force behind the West Freshman Ignition Program. Thanks to her efforts, West's ninth grade students arrive to a warm and welcoming environment here in the main office. LeAnn also organizes the standardized testing protocols, and all of the exams go off without a hitch. LeAnn is the first to arrive every morning, and I -- that's early, guys. Wow. What is it?
Six-twenty.
Six-twenty. She's the first to arrive every morning, and it is difficult for staff to imagine walking into the office and not see her smiling face. This school year, West instituted a Homework Completion Room. Thanks to LeAnn's tireless efforts at rounding up students, more and more ninth graders are completing their work on time. LeAnn also takes care of minor discipline and student issues, so the APs can deal with the more important items. She is a keeper of the candy, the keeper of the candy.
(Laughter).
Yes. Students and staff alike know that they can seek out that secret spot at her desk for some stress relief. And, when necessary, she's in the -- she is the office hammer, the one who gets the kids back in place and back on pace. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate LeAnn Dominic on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.[222.79][222.79](Applause).
Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.[226.79][226.79](Laughter).
She's a sweetheart. Thank you for your passion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.
Thank you. She's a sweetheart. Thank you for your passion. Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.
Thank you. She's a sweetheart. Thank you for your passion. Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.
Thank you. She's a sweetheart. Thank you for your passion. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, LeAnn. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Yes?
Oh.
Thank you. She's a sweetheart. Thank you for your passion. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Next, we have Lori Probst.
Hi, good evening. I'm one of your employees. I was hired in 1995, so I've been privileged to work for you for 20 years now and enjoy working with elementary children. I'm just here as an employee, though. I realize you're adopting a new health savings account plan soon for our health benefits. And I'd just like, as you are making decisions regarding this, to keep in mind those of us who may, in the past, have been diagnosed with a serious illness and will always meet the deductible. And I know budgets are tight. I know with the upcoming state budget, we're taking another hit. We've taken a lot of hits, and I get that. We all try and help with that. But I'm just asking you to just keep that in mind when you're making decisions in the future. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Thank you for your comments. We have three-minute approvals that we're looking at, or three minutes to approve tonight. We have the February 11th, 2015, regular board meeting minutes, the February 11th, 2015 executive session minutes, and then the March 2nd, 2015 executive session, which was an expulsion session, actually, our very first expulsion of this year. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So...
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ellen Langel. Any discussion or modifications? Sue, will you take the roll call?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Comel.
Aye. Passes eight-zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications. Mr. Gray, did you receive any?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay. Mrs. Brusink, do you have a report to give on Waukesha Education Foundation?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Registration for the April 18th Strive to Thrive event is now open on the WEF website, WEF for Waukesha Education Foundation, as well as the Pro Health website. Promotion by the WEF Board and Pro Health has produced flyers, posters, upcoming press releases, and other marketing efforts to make this a well-attended event. The WEF will also have a table at the event to promote the foundation and the upcoming golf outing. The WEF grant application process will begin this coming week with information and forms available on our website. We are anticipating approximately $15,000 available for district projects, including some special funds targeted toward fine arts, technology, and particular schools. We encourage all district faculty and staff to consider a proposal. Proposals are reviewed by a subcommittee of the Foundation Board with input from the district to ensure proposed programs are consistent with district curriculum policy. Successful proposals must meet specific criteria and objectives. Following the review, recommendations are made to the WEF Board in May, and grants awarded for the following year are then announced. WEF banners are now on display in the fieldhouse of our three high schools. Please look for them as you attend athletic events or other activities at our high school. And finally, our weekly newsletter was mailed last week, which includes highlights of our coming events and current information for our WEF supporters. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Appreciate that. I think the grants are going... We're accepting them now.
Yes.
And it's going through April 20th, I think.
Right.
So, got a little bit of time for the teachers to get those in. Mrs. Langel.
Thank you, Barb. And if you could take the message back that I thought that newsletter just continues to be a wonderful publication.
I agree.
Great way to keep in touch with everyone, donors or non-donors, future donors. And also, I really like the fact that when they do give a grant, they've been posting it.
Yes.
Here, at the Lindholm. So, I hope they'll continue to do that, because that's great to see the list.
Well, then, they have that Celebration of Excellence in the fall.
Right.
And all of the grant winners have their projects and programs on display, and it's just unbelievable what the teachers come up with.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you for that, Alan. I agree. I thought that that newsletter was outstanding.
Yep.
Thank you, Barb. Moving on to the Safety Committee. Mr. Baumgart?
Okay. Safety Committee met this morning. We reviewed the student and employee accident reports. A situation of increased cases involving student action on teachers are appearing at one school and has been escalated for further review. Second item committee is denying... Safety Committee is denying a request to install a new game at one of our schools called Gaga Ball, believe it or not, at one of our schools. It was viewed by the committee and by our insurance provider as potentially a non-safe situation for the kids, so we're not going to be putting it in. For student health matters, measles, pertussis are essentially a non-issue in our district so far. Keep it that way. There has been an absence issue about... With flu about at one of our schools. It's not out of line. It's just getting a little bit more than we normally would have. And lastly, a reminder is given regarding April being a month when we will be having tornado drills at all of our schools.
Yes. Thank you, Bill. And want to roll right into the charter school report?
I will move right into the charter school report. Not very much... I'm going to report on here. There's a few more things we'll be getting in your packages, informational things. E-Achieve reporting on their enrollment, open enrollment applications for the 15, 16 school year continue to come in slower than usual. We've received about 80% of the number of applications we did at the same time last year, but part of the decline is being offset by an increase in the number of alternative open enrollment applications that we've received to date for immediate enrollment in the school. And the second item from Rich is, in a February parent satisfaction survey of our pilot elementary program, 100% of the parents responding indicated that they are satisfied with the progress that their students are making. The survey also revealed our greatest area of need is in progress reporting, and we already have appointments looking into a way to help with that.
Bill, do you know if that was... Is this the first year we've done that, or have we done that every year? I don't recall.
The...
The parent satisfaction...
Well, this is the first year we had an elementary program.
Right.
So...
Do we do that for secondary also?
I am not sure. I know they do some kind of a survey, but I don't know if it's done every year with parents, yeah.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that. A general item, I continue to be impressed by the collaboration that is being done by our related charters there. I mean, the STEM, the Engineering Academy and Health Academy collaborating so that the transition process is transparent to the kids and as encouraging as it can to the families to potentially use the charter schools. Early reports indicate a full or near-full enrollment in all of these programs. I do not have the exact numbers yet, but we'll be getting them... I doubt if it'll be by Friday, but soon. And East High School, Sharon reports, analyzing student map data from fall to spring, 2/3 of our sophomores at East have increased their reading scores by two to 12 points, getting them closer to the college and career readiness bench marks. So, we are making progress with our kids over at East. Good progress. Oops, and that is all I have to report.
Questions of our charter school report? All right. Thank you, Bill. Move on to our consent agenda. Ms. Clifton, did we have any gifts given to us this last month?
We do. We have two to report this month. $1,000 was donated to Hadfield Elementary School by Carla Omen. The gift will be used to supplement the academic incentive program. And then, a second gift was received by Les Paul Middle School, and it was given by Paul and Kathleen Omen and the Northwest Matching Funds. That was $2,000, and it will be used to integrate technology, science, and math in the classrooms.
Nice, yes, excellent. We're always appreciative. Thank you, Mrs. Clifton. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have an opportunity to do so in just a minute. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on March 2nd. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Hearing none? Mr. Edlin, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of a total of 10 retirements, including one revision, five resignations, three leave requests, and one teacher contract. Nine of them were in your packet, and one was included in the addendum on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Langel. Any discussion? All right. Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Joseph Comel.
Aye. Passes eight-zero, Sue?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Edlin.
Thank you.
We're on to Mr. Gray's superintendent's report.
Wednesday, March 18th, you have at your desk an invitation to the Future Chefs Competition. This is... This year, it's at West High School. Every year, we get some nice recipes for it. Last year's winner was featured at our WEF Celebration of Excellence, so we're hoping that we can continue that kind of performance in the future. But it's a fun event. It's good for the kids, and it's good for the adults to see what these kids can actually come up with. So, very exciting. Last weekend, I had a chance to see the Phantom of the Opera at West High School. I have seen the Phantom of the Opera literally all over the U.S. in different places, mostly professional performances, but the West performance was as good or better than any I've seen. Just amazing. If you want to see how these... You know, we sometimes see how our students are in the younger grades. If you want to see what these students have become as freshmen, juniors, seniors, these plays are wonderful things to attend. But this is just absolutely fantastic event. The kids did a wonderful job. Outstanding director. And I believe next week, South has their play coming up. So, we can... If you're ever interested in those, and you're wondering about those, either Sue or I can get you the dates for those events. But they're just, I mean, really a good showcase for those things that our students do that aren't necessarily recorded on a school report card. Now, to a different item, and that's vouchers. I will continue to put out information, contact legislators. This weekend, I had a chance to chat briefly with Senator Paul Farrow. We will be sitting down later on, talking about the impact of the voucher funding plan. And again, I'm not necessarily saying that vouchers are a bad idea, but the funding plan attached to the vouchers is a bad idea, and that has to change. That has to somehow be fixed. If it's a situation where the student goes to a voucher school and doesn't come here, and we don't count them, I guess that's understandable, because we're used to working under that type of environment. But where we also have to pay for them without receiving corresponding increase in revenue is very, very painful. So, we're looking 13, the high 13s, to $14,000 loss per student that goes to voucher school. Now, when... I learned when life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. So, I'm hoping that... I'm hoping we can schedule a very short workshop session next Tuesday evening. We have policy at 5:30. Typically, those take about a half hour, and we could roll into a short board session on the funding and some of the operations from that. I think it'll be fairly quick, because you've seen it with the 4K plan. It's basically the 4K plan, just with full-time students as opposed to .6 FTE students. So, it should go pretty quickly. Some of the other issues that were brought up at the FNF, we'll address those as well. But I think some of those have actually been addressed by us in the Freeman, and I know Mr. Wallace has also addressed some of those as well. But I think it'll be a relatively quick meeting. And then, immediately after that, we need a short, closed session to approve a situation with a potential lawsuit that we could be in. And so, I think it can be resolved very quickly with a short, closed session, and we can move on. So, I don't expect it to be a long evening Tuesday, but if that would work, we would schedule it for 6:00 p.m., right after policy.
So, who can... Who could meet Tuesday at 6:00? Is there anyone who can't meet Tuesday at 6:00?
That's St. Patrick's Day?
Yes.
Dr. Langel?
We expect corned beef.
Okay. Dr. Langel, you can't make it?
Doesn't look good. I'll try to see if I can switch something, but I...
You can always... And if you want to stop in and talk about the funding, you know, you can too. But I'll have information that will go out on Friday that we'll discuss it then. But again, you've seen it with the 4K program. It's just with using a full-time student as opposed to a .6.
No, I appreciate that, and I, you know, I'm just sort of star-crossed with this, because all of a sudden, you know, a date is announced that I'm looking at next week. It's the only night I can't come. I mean, just drives me nuts. It's not your fault.
Well, if there's a lot of other conflicts, I'm just thinking, because we do have policy, we'll have three members already here.
Yeah. No, I understand. I understand.
And of course, you already know I won't be there.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, so that's two of us. So, if it ends up being three, then I think that'll be a problem.
Well, is there a better week? Is there a better night for these two? Is it... Yeah, I mean, we could...
I'm out all next week.
All week?
So, a better night for you, Dr. Langel?
Any night but Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, why don't... I can have Sue calling tomorrow, and Sue can call tomorrow, and we can... But it would be nice to kind of...
Yeah, I understand.
Get that moving forward, because I think, again, with the budget situation, which you'll hear about later on tonight, I think anything we can do to be creative within... You know, if they're going to hand us these laws, we should use them to our advantage and make sure that we can fund our operations.
And maybe I can switch. I'll try to switch.
Now, Dr. Langel, I'm really not calling your husband and asking him what your schedule is, and then trying to toss out those dates.
Oh, no, no. You don't have to do that. No, just I'm unlucky.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just a quick question. Is there required action relative to the Montessori?
There... I don't know at this point. We'd probably have that at another meeting.
Okay.
So, that people can... If there's... You know, there's always additional questions that result in these things, and so we would probably have one more.
Okay. So, for the Montessori portion, it'd be more informational than an action. And for the other portion, it might be an action, a direction or something?
Correct. The exact session would probably be an action.
Typically, workshops, we don't take action.
That's true.
But closed sessions can be in-depth, so...
Exactly.
All right. Sue, you'll call around?
Yes, I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Now, we're going to move on to our standing committee reports. That's where most of the heavy lifting is done, most of the work by the board. And we're going to start out this month with curriculum instruction given by Barbara Brusink.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our committee meeting was held Tuesday, March 3rd, at 6:00 p.m. Tonight, we have a few information discussion items that appear on the agenda for curriculum instruction. We have no action items, however, this evening. The first information item refers to Content Coordinators' Update: Goals and Evidence of Results, CTE. This is the first in a series of updates provided to the CNI Committee from our Content Coordinators. Tuesday evening, CTE Coordinator Amy Lang provided an update on Career and Technical Education, that's what CTE stands for, on the highlights and data from the past year, including Transcripted Credit, Work-Based Learning, Waukesha Made, M-A-D-E, Dual Enrollment, et cetera, and forecasted upcoming items. Next month, we look forward to hearing from World Languages Coordinator Sharon Tebow. Secondly, we talked about the K-812 Math Review Recommendation. The Director of Elementary Education, Bob Antheline, along with Rose Palmer and Dan Proshinsky, brought forth recommendations of two digital resources for K-812 math. Historically, the School District of Waukesha has allowed buildings to select which digital resources for math are being used for instruction and learning. The goal of the CNI Mathematics Review Process is to recommend digital resources that are consistent throughout our system, provide professional development for the resources, be able to review data across the system from similar sources, have the resources be a value-add to our instructors, and be able to support the variance of learners within the School District of Waukesha. The recommendation brought forth by the team is that DreamBox Learning and Online Math and Ten Mark Math become the primary digital resources, supporting math instruction in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And I believe that there was a... There will possibly be a workshop in connection with this coming up.
Ms. Brusink?
Yes.
Is it okay to speak to that?
Sure, of course.
Okay. I know we have it in front of us, and I know it says "Board Action," I assume maybe at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Because I did want to bring up again what we had a long discussion about that night.
Yes, we did.
Dari, did you want to do it?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Because I have some, I mean, some really, I think, pivotal questions, because while the programs themselves sound good, and we saw them on the screen and so forth, they did say to us, and I think it's important to realize this, that these two programs digitally are not loadable into our iPads. Therefore, any family or any student with a family that does not have Wi-Fi at home is going to be deprived of the use of this. And I have a real, serious problem with that. I don't know if it's 10%, 5%, even if it's 1%. I just think philosophically, we have to be careful, and we can't embrace something as one of our key... Or these two, you know, Ten Marks in this box, as our key digital supplements to math learning, if it isn't accessible to all of our students and all of our families. And it isn't.
It isn't, right.
So, I have really some serious questions about that. So, I just wanted to mention it tonight, and I know it doesn't come up until next board meeting, but I think we have to be really careful with that.
And I think some other committee members held the same belief that you did. Did you...
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
Real quickly, after a discussion about these, some of these are in action now. There's many different resources that were being used across the district and across classrooms. So, the original intent was to try to consolidate to a couple of those that have been most successful and most reliable. We feel that are the strongest. The conversation did take place about, while they're used in school and they work quite well with the Internet and the system throughout our system, it's when they're required any time at home or through homework or other pieces. So, I know the team has taken that and gone back into what are some of the solution findings, everything about what are current percentages of students that have or do not have access to Wi-Fi at home, as well as reaching out to the companies and figuring out... Because some aspects of it do download, whether it's worksheets that they're working on or other pieces. We want to make sure we have a clear answer on that. We did put that on the agenda as just an information item to get this discussion going, because we wouldn't see coming forward with an action item until it's been another information item or two, depending until we get to a level of comfort.
Did you also say that there's a potential for a workshop on this, or not?
Based off of the last discussion that we had, we've had some ghost accounts created and sent out to the CNI Committee, so they get a chance to see the tools firsthand. When this is on the agenda again, I believe, next month, we're going to have a further discussion about answering some of these questions, and at that point, we'll probably decide as a team if we go to...
Sue, it goes within the committee? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did get that already.
Yes, we did.
Yep. I tried to use it.
And? Give us some feedback, Mr. Baumgart.
Was the key word "try"?
It's very important.
I'll talk about it later. It's clumsy.
It's clumsy, right.
But once you get into it, it works fine.
Right.
Getting into it was the clumsy part.
And the question, I think, that hangs in the air is, why do we do it that way instead of?
No, I had no problem with that.
You don't have no problem with that? I do.
Well, it looks like you guys have a little bit more work to do on this, so...
Yeah, we do. We do. And thank you for your comments, Dr. Langel. We really had a long discussion on the item.
Yeah, we do.
Anyone else have any comments, et cetera? Mr. Edlin?
Hey. Thank you, Ms. Brusink. We heard earlier this evening from a concerned parent about Common Core math, and what... Honestly, I have to agree with the speaker about how we're teaching math in this fashion. I guess I'm a little concerned if this has been addressed in what we're looking at by the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Is this what's going to be on the new programs that we're going to be consolidating to? I mean, I'm not a parent, but, you know, if I were a parent, I'd be very concerned about this, too. And I, you know...
Mr. Crowe?
There's... In the role that I'm in, I receive a number of emails or information about examples of either worksheets or problems or different approaches across a lot of the classrooms. The intent, I know, is not to make things more confusing, but sometimes a variety of ways are taught in an attempt to have students understand number cents other than maybe a traditional fashion or something that is pretty straightforward. And sometimes those are highlighted as that's confusing, or that's a different way. And so, whether it's DreamBox, Ten Marks, or some of our current math classroom practices right now, the good old approach to math and from facts and understanding basics and other pieces are a very healthy part of those curriculum, if not the main part of it. There are other techniques that sometimes are used or introduced, and sometimes that does create a sense of confusion when it's, here's how we're addressing learning a problem, learning to add or subtract, and then a new way is brought in. Multiplication, they use a system that I didn't necessarily use when I had learned, and it comes across in different ways. So, it's not a rule to have to do certain things, but I know there are sometimes different approaches taught in solving some problems. But by all means, it's not designed to be leaving a certain sense behind. It's about building a deeper understanding of some things.
Okay. I guess a follow-up question to that would be, do we give our educators the leeway to make their own decisions about what methodology they're going to be using to teach?
Yeah. And actually, a step further on that, we all... They have a framework that they teach, but actually, we give the students a lot of different varieties to see which one works best for them or to see which approach. So, as they go to math centers or math stations, oftentimes, they'll be trying to learn about fractions in four or five different methods, everything from hands-on building it to traditional adding and subtracting, let's say, its fractions, to understanding basic equations as well as different techniques. I've seen this firsthand from the role that I'm in. I've also seen it firsthand as a parent of a fourth and fifth grader in our system, of seeing different techniques. And there are times I look at some of the worksheets, too, and say, "Talk to me about this approach, and help me understand the way that you're learning it this way." And usually, a student can explain two or three different ways to balance an equation, to add and subtract. You know, even in kindergarten, you use the term of bits and skinnies and holes, as they're using blocks to understand base 100 or base 10 or 100 blocks. So, there are some different techniques, but by all means, if the result is confusion or lack of learning, we've got our work to do. And so, that's not the intent.
Do we react to parents who bring this to the attention of the teacher or the principal?
Definitely. I've been a part of many, many of those discussions and bringing those conversations forward. I know that they, they have happened frequently in math over the years. Every year, math is probably our largest conversation that takes place between home and school regarding student's performance or student's readiness in that place. And I know that there's tons of conversations, and if parents are having concerns about it, or want to have support, or want to have an understanding, I tell them directly reach out to the teacher for a conversation first, as well as to the principal in that school, or to myself, is try to facilitate as many of those as possible. But by all means, the goal is the same, I think, as it's always been, for high levels of student learning. Our math scores and achievement scores continue to go up in the district across the system over the last couple of years. So we're monitoring that as close as we can, and if, as well as if individual students not understanding something, that signifies a problem. So whether it's the example shared tonight, or any future example, if there's a problem with how it's being taught, or how it's being understood, we have to get to the heart of that, and we're not saying it must be this, it's about understanding.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah. You know, I think it's always a problem when you're, I remember, I've gone through New Math, that's when my education began, you know? New Math was very controversial. We had to figure out sets and subsets, and it was, it was crazy. And then I remember when I first, my, you know, first exposure to education, it was the whole language and Hooked on Phonics. When was the last time you heard a Hooked on Phonics commercial? You know? Where they, where they wanted parents to torture their kids by learning phonics over and over again. You know, and I learned on phonics, and it worked fine for me, but I also realized I learned by just understanding words. I am a math geek. I like math, and I've always liked math. I could, I also have a great memory of what, you know, how I learned when I was very young. And I didn't do this kind of math in first grade, I can tell you that.
You can't do it.
It wasn't done in first grade, period. You know? I started learning adding and subtracting in second grade, okay? So we're asking kids to advance, and they are, they're advancing much faster than they did when I grew up. And so this concept that children aren't getting a good education today just isn't really correct. I mean, and you can see it in the evidence of the complexity that we ask our first graders to do. I think the ability to work and manipulate numbers is the fundamental concept of math, and being able to teach that to children at an early age is actually very good. I received a book from my daughter a few years back where it showed you how to work numbers to derive the formula E equals mc squared. You know, the Einstein formula for, and it's just a trigonometry problem. And so the whole concept that we should dictate to educators how they educate, I agree with Mr. Edlin, give them flexibility, but children are going to learn, and parents are going to help their children learn, and there's going to be frustrations. That's, it's been, it's almost timeless.
Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah. I, looking at what Mr. Reese handed out, I tend to agree with Paul and Stephen this one, because I don't always agree with them, but anyway, I do think that this is overly complicated and a very simple process, and I have raised that issue separately with some of our math people, and I've seen some other worksheets, worksheets, which I can't even figure out what they're trying to get at. So there is, there is an issue that I think we will be pursuing. However, I do not believe this is directly related to Common Core, as Mr. Edlin preferred.
No, no.
Crawford?
No.
I mean, the Common Core doesn't teach us to teach this way.
Right.
No, and the other thing is about, some of the examples that I've found is, in digging in and talking to the teacher, is the context around maybe a specific example. Sometimes there's a much larger context around subtraction in that classroom, or adding numbers, or whatever it might be, and understanding the whole lesson, or the week of learning experiences for kids, sometimes paints a better picture of maybe how that came in, or different techniques. Speaking of that subtraction problem with the grade level, I was at a school this week, I'll point it out, because it was a very positive visit, I was at Banting, and sat through an entire math workshop lesson from start to finish during one of our tours. And in the introduction, there wasn't anything that was surprising or eye-opening in terms of how the math was being taught. At the six or seven stations that were introduced, the kids had ample opportunity to learn, to show their thinking in many different ways. And in the teacher station, when the teacher did their conferring with the student, that's really where they checked to hear their thinking and their understanding of the concept for the day. The students were, were able to share out, here's how I approached the subtraction problem, here are the steps that I'm taking to solve the problem. And it was a very straightforward process, even though a couple of different ways were taught. So that, you know, that would be sort of the expectation of, of our math classrooms or our math workshop, to go with a pretty straightforward piece, and that, and the pieces we were talking about in this update with 10 Marks and Dream Box should have many of those components. Actually, in our classrooms now, one of the stations will be a 10 Marks learning module, or a Dream Box learning module, that the students will go to for five to seven minutes to practice in that context, as well as a paper pencil one, or other pieces.
So there's, there's some good feedback, Mrs. Buzink, that you got, and we're early in this discussion still, right? So it looks like the committee has a little bit of work still to do on this, so...
But the question I, you know, I always pose to, to Mr. Kron, and he's always so cooperative, is, why do we do it this way? So I, I guess I'll be looking for an answer as to why. And this is not new, this has been going on for a long time, but yet, I, I guess I'm not so sure that when you get out in the real world, that you would solve a mathematical problem like this. I think the common way would be four and two are six, but...
That's about right.
So I, you know, I'll be looking for some rationale as to why. This is not just unique to Walka Shuffle either, because I have grandkids in other school districts, and this is just the way of math everywhere. And they're getting kids to think deeper and understand how math works, rather than just working math. So, yeah, further discussion forthcoming.
Excellent.
Thank you all for participating in the discussion. The next item is the Walka Shuffle Learning, Walka Shuffle Learning Updates and Changes, and that's, we're calling it Walka Shuffle Learning, based on the old grading for learning. The CNI Leadership Team provided us with an update on Walka Shuffle Learning. This included what is happening at the elementary level, as well as providing us with a look at the high school grading scale draft. Lastly, the team provided us with an update on the progress being made with Infinite Campus. Assessment updates and follow-up.
Is there any, this is a discussion item?
This is a discussion, any discussion on that item?
Any questions, comments?
I believe that in your packet, there was a copy of the grading system.
Dr. Langel?
Yeah, it is for discussion, so I'm just going to mention...
Yes, please.
Because we're not voting on it, but as we mentioned last Tuesday, I mean, I think the top part here, you know, seems to me from our committee, a lot of people were very happy with that clarity, and I certainly felt that way. The question I had, and it's in front of us again with the same, I think, questionable wording, is the bottom boxes. Non-academic college and career readiness indicators are sort of softy vowels. And I understand that, but I just think that we had talked about some wording suggestions that if this does come in front of us for an action item, I had some questions about, particularly under basic, it said, some of the time, but needs help managing values, and I have a big question mark there. I think we have to be real clear, if this is going to go to parents, you know, and they're told your student's having trouble managing values, what does that mean? I mean, I think we have to be really clear. So when this comes back, I hope it will be revised with some clarity. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. O'Brien?
I think just going back to the A-B-C-D grading method, parents are going to pay more attention to that.
Oh, of course.
They know what a C means. If you, if you, you know, when we were talking about the point system, even though it, it's better to have the clarity that it's an A-B-C-D, and transitioning it back, they're not going to look at the lower columns too much. When your child's a C child, they're probably not going to go on to, let's say in math, there might not be a high-level math professor sometime in the future. And if there's, if they're a C to a D in language, they might not be a proficient writer in the future. Their skill set might be more in tune to the trades, or they might, they might be slower developing, and they may still get A's when they get into college. But I think it's very clear, once we go to the letter system, that helps just a tremendous amount. Even though it's a simple thing, it's important for the parents. And I'm very pleased that the administration was able to find a way to implement that with, actually, in a very short period of time.
That's right.
So Mr. Kron should be congratulated, and Ms. Langel should be congratulated, that when they were asked to take a hard look at this and do something, they reacted so quickly. Or Mrs. Landish, excuse me.
Landish.
Yeah.
Mr. Edlin?
I, I like the letter grades, but there's one grade that's always seems to be evolving, and that's the one at the bottom. F used to stand for fail, U used to stand for unsatisfactory, and now we're at I, incomplete. Is this a feel-good terminology, or what? I don't understand. Why are we changing it again?
I think it represents the fact that we, we aren't going to let kids fail. If you're, if you're in a position where you wouldn't normally get an F, you're coming in for more work, you know, discussions with parents, whatever it takes to get that student to that, to that next level. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's really easy to give, you know, if student isn't performing, just give them an F and move on. We're beyond that. We need to make sure all our students, and especially with the new, the new accountability coming up, we just, the message is, we're not going to let you fail. You're still going to have to step up and do the work, but we're going to make sure you're there, we're going to make sure you come in for interventions and whatever it takes, because we just can't afford to let students go and get an F, and, and I mean, that just doesn't, doesn't work anymore.
Mr. Baumgart?
Again, aren't we being crossing summative into informative, mixing them up again, because at the end of the semester, if a student hasn't done it, there will still be Fs.
No credit will be awarded if the student hasn't passed the class.
You're not going to call it an F? Even at the end of the, you know, this is June 10th now.
Yeah. Well, in terms of at the end of the report card, the student would, they wouldn't receive any credit or any, or anything, there wouldn't be any grade points for it, there wouldn't be any credit for it, but the I right now, which is in proposal, is really representative of what really is happening in a student's life. A student that...
In the formative process.
Let's put on the transcript.
Right, well, right now, it's an F. But if this, what it would go through, I don't know what a final transcript would look like, I'd have to look back to Jody on this one, is it, it would...
It would eventually post as an F.
It would eventually post as an F if the class has ultimately failed. There are a number of students, and this is where this is coming into play, with that continue to take summer school, continue to take classes over, continue to go to academic options, and complete the class. And the incomplete message on here, it really is about students understanding what is their next step in completing this, and even to our teachers in our system, which is giving them information about here's what needs to be accomplished to complete the class, or to earn a credit.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I think from a color coding standpoint, we should make it clear that if they finish with an I, and they don't complete the ability to get credit, that they won't receive the credit. And that doesn't really show that here by using the same blue color for both a D and an I. I'd say if there's an I, it's red. At least put it in red and say there's no credits awarded for I's. Okay? And if you want to not end up with an F, you're going to have to do something to get that off that I to a D.
Off to a D.
Yeah. So maybe that's the solution.
Right. Dr. Langel?
Well, and just to follow up on Kurt's point, I think typically, and I don't know what the future is of these students, if they go on to whatever school, tech school maybe, or whatever, but typically, if you get an I in advanced education of whatever kind, it means that the professor slash teacher has said, this is what you haven't completed, and this is what you must do by a certain time period, or it will become an F. So if indeed, we're holding everybody to that standard, then that's fine. But if, an I just means, really, you sort of are failing, but, I mean, in other words, an I has to be very specific as to what you haven't done, and what you must do to get credit, and by when.
I think so.
And if, if we're going to do that, then an I could be used, but otherwise, then F is probably...
To me, what I'm hearing is, F, F does exist...
But it's not...
And it will be on the transcript. It doesn't necessarily have to be given out at the end. If there is something more that the teacher thinks that the student can do, it would be an I for them to go to summer school or whatever, with very specific instructions. So to me, the way this discussion's been going, is really F should still be a part of this.
Right, and that's Kurt's point, I think, whether we put it in red, you know, whatever, but I think it probably has to be up here, just again, so we're telling parents, this is what an I means, and by X date, you know, if that isn't fulfilled, then this is an F. Yeah.
It sounds to me like perhaps we need to rework the wording, so that, you know, it's, you know, so that F is included because it is given, because it's really not fair if we give it and it's not included in performance indicators and grading scale.
Mr. Edlin?
I do agree with Superintendent Gray's approach on this, and that is to continuing to encourage students to do to the best of their ability.
Right.
If we've got somebody who's a slacker, and they just don't want to participate, I don't want to reward that person at the end of the semester with an I, because that is not the effort that was put forward. And that's why I would support a final grade be anything other than an I. If they go to summer school, that's remedial, and you get a separate grade for that, and that's to, you know, show that you put forth the extra effort to get out of that F. But I don't think it should be an I, because you actually, you know, that's the work that you put forward during the school year.
Mr. O'Brien?
Also, I think one of the problems is, if you put an I on there, and then you say the point, point's a sign, point nine nine, it should be a zero. There shouldn't be a point nine nine for an I. It should be a zero. An I is a zero, and you do have a chance, you know, you're not finished yet, unless you choose to be, but an I is a zero. It shouldn't be a partial score. So I was a little bit, I think that also adds to the confusion.
I agree. I agree. I agree.
Mr. Kron?
Real quick, again, this draft has circulated, just went to a group of teacher leaders this past week, went through our superintendent's parents advisory meeting about three weeks ago, went to our CNI Committee last week. Again, knowing that we need to continue to circulate it and gather feedback in some of these pieces is one of, is one of those things. I do want to end on a, on a high note with this piece, because it is, there is something pretty exciting and happening, especially in our high schools. We had a high school updates this week, or this morning alone, and they track our students who are coming in, in need of intervention or support, or that are below grade level, or that are receiving Fs or, or D's. There are part of different options, from our academic options, to some intervention courses, to additional courses, and what we're seeing, we're seeing in a trend line that's amazing, but it really gets at this piece of students getting feedback where they know where they're at, and what they need to do to, what they need to do to fix that or achieve. And with the new flexible models, we're seeing those numbers drop dramatically. Talking about North High School this morning, having 80-plus students in this in the beginning of the year, down to 20 students at this point in the year, that are needing to come in for some of these models as seniors or juniors. So you're seeing these drastic changes, so we're excited about some of that. We want to capture and leave our door open for that in some of our pieces, but definitely with, whether it's terminology, or language, with Fs, or policies, we want to work on that, but the biggest message of what we're seeing is, is students are seeing that they can take an active role in moving their achievement up, or achieving that. So I want to throw that in at the end, because that's the story, good storyline behind it, but we know the front end of this is clear information out to families and kids along the way.
Right. Any other discussion or questions on this? Okay, Barb?
Well, I would just like to just add one, one quick comment, and that is, I'd like to compliment Mr. Kron and other members of the Administrative CNI Department, because they went out to every school, and they talked to teachers, all teachers, and the feedback was very positive, that people came out and talked to us and asked us our opinion, and listened to our feedback, and took it under consideration, and I, I think that that's a very positive move. Okay, moving forward, assessment updates and follow-up. Following the February 10th CNI Committee meeting, we were still left searching for a single document that was a quick reference for what tests we administer, who takes what test, and what is the financial impact. Returning on the agenda last week, Dean McCormick provided us with a handy reference document to answer all of the above questions. Bob Antheline also informed us that we are still taking a close look on who, when, and why we are testing.
Any feedback on this? Good. Mr. O'Brien?
This might be for Mr. Kron, or whoever does the testing. My understanding is they've already announced another modification of the Badger Test, that this written exam, you know, essay exam is out.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they, they're, it's, it doesn't look anything like it was supposed to at this point. There is legislation that would say, you know, we have to take the test because of the federal funding tied to it, but that it wouldn't count for school report cards or accountability purposes this year. And I think, you know what, that might be a, a better idea than waiving the test, because it gives us a chance to treat it as a pilot. If we have some glitches in it, it's not going to hurt us, it's not going to work against us. So I, I guess, I know Senator Paul, Paul Pharo and some others had introduced that, and so I, I support that direction, simply because I think we're, you know, technology-wise, we're prepared for it, but there will obviously be, you know, with 14,000 kids, you're bound to run into glitches the first time, and so if we do that, we can figure out what, what we need to do next time without any penalties. So I, what, what that test looks like in the end, who knows?
Yeah, well, I mean, the frustrating part is sometimes Common Core gets confused with things like math instruction and stuff like that. I think most people, most rational people in the, that are in the educational system are very frustrated with the amount of testing that comes with the Common Core program. I don't think there's, I don't think there's too much argument that there's way too much testing of our kids under, under this program, and, and its predecessor, No Child Left Behind, was every bit as bad. Okay? So I don't know what we do about it, because it's mandated, it's mandated down, but it's very frustrating to have to spend so much time preparing teachers and kids for tests, rather than just teaching them. Okay? So, anyway.
Mr. Edlund?
Thank you. To Mr. O'Brien's point, there was a, a strike today, for those of you who might not have seen it in the news, by three hundred students who walked out of a school. Actually, I think it was a hundred and one school, and multiple schools participated in this over the Common Core testing. The students are frustrated because of the number of tests that they're required to continually take. They feel that what this is going to lead to is teaching to the test. And they, they're, they're very concerned about that as students. And the two students that I, I saw this video online articulated their points extremely well. I'm hoping that, you know, they get a lot of attention out of this, because I think frustration levels are going to get really high, not only with the students, but with the teachers, who now are going to be put under the microscope if their students aren't performing to the test. So I think it's something that we just have to be aware of. You know, I like the fact that we're eventually, you know, going to lead to every student taking the AP test in Wisconsin. I think that's a much more fair assessment of students.
AP or ACT?
ACT, I'm sorry, ACT, yeah. ACT tests, because it'll lead to a much more fair assessment across the board in district to district. And it covers all facets of curriculum, so it's, I think, a much more evenly applied.
And plus, we already have sixty-plus percent of the kids taking it anyways.
Correct. Whether you're going on to college or not, it's a standard that's already out there. And I think, I don't, I don't agree with the federal government getting involved in, that's my personal opinion. I don't want to go.
Just, I, I just like, the, the issue we have, though, is the, the level of accountability, I don't want to say forces us to go in this direction, but if we, you know, if we're not focusing on, on those standards very heavily, our school report cards suffer. And, and with the new grading system that they want to come out with in, in Madison, even doing very, very well might get you a C grade. In other words, meeting expectations, which is a good thing, is now going to be a, a C. And, and people relate a C to average or even below average. So, you know, this has to come, this has to come out of Madison. They need to look at, at how we test, what we, what we test. The test is so focused on certain curriculum areas to the exclusion of others. And we know in this district, we have so many other good things that we do for students to help them prepare for careers that don't anyway get counted on those report cards. So it, that, that whole thing is frustrating, and you, you know how I feel about the, the state report card, because I share that about every couple of months. But, but again, I think it leads to that issue of, of the, the testing issue. And, and someone has to start listening to the individual school districts on this, on what the issues are. And the, and the students, you know, they need to listen and see what the students are saying about it.
That was exactly one of the points that these students articulated this morning, was that the, the Common Core tests were curriculum-specific and not necessarily broad-based as the fundamental education that they're receiving. So they felt that if it was too restrictive of very narrow tests, that they're having to waste a lot of time on one particular area of their education. So they were, they were very frustrated with the whole process. So now back to the question that I had here. On this chart that we had of all the tests that are administered throughout the different grade levels, one stood out to me, the pre-K test. We're only testing one grade level here, a very limited number of children, and it has an extremely high cost for, for the amount of money that we're spending on, on this particular test. I'm just wondering if it's that beneficial to us.
That's the gold.
Yeah, the gold, which was ten thousand eight hundred dollars a year. And that was far and above. I mean, the only one that, you know, the map is, you know, covers kindergarten through tenth grade at a hundred twenty thousand a year, but it's the second highest.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and, and again, being, being part of the four K program, the DPI has certain requirements. There may be a less expensive test to use to, to meet some of those requirements. We'll, we'll have a new director of that program next year, and I think that's something, be a good project for her to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, is that, Mr. Cron, is that gold test that they give to the pre-K kids, that's not written, is it?
No.
No.
And it's actually used basically throughout the year. It's a pretty comprehensive, they base, most of the four K teachers base most of their daily lesson plans on the gold assessment, which is administered throughout the year. It's a pretty hefty assessment that has a number of resources for teaching resources that are aligned to it. So there is a cost to it. We chuckle ourselves, and then we call, they call it the gold, and it feels like we pay for gold sometimes. Because it's, it's pretty extensive, but it's not a one-time test. It's actually used throughout the year as almost a curriculum resource, but it's a nice, the assessment piece. It is being reviewed as part of our changes, but it should almost be administered as an assessment slash curriculum planning resource, because it is used on a weekly basis by the teachers.
And then, you know, I guess I noticed also, and I, I brought it up, but I'd like to repeat it, that we test our youngest students the most of all. And I, I guess I have a problem with that. If you look at this, School District of Waukesha assessments for kindergarten, looks like we're giving four tests. And I think, gee, do we need to do that much testing to find out how well they're doing?
Mr. O'Brien?
I just have a question because of that four K testing, and in fact, we have four K programs, we have partners. And have, have we been able to use that to make an assessment of, of our four K program? And which partner schools are doing well and which ones aren't doing well?
Yeah, I, I mean, we have not gone and, and judged them that, I mean, we, if, if they're, if they're not doing well, typically, they know to move on. We have different partners now than when we started, because some weren't doing, doing what needed to be done. It wasn't totally based off the, this, this test, but I mean, there were other issues that, and again, a certain amount of academic performance. But again, four K is less of an academic program than it is a preparation-to-learn program.
I hope so.
And I think one of the things last night we talked about, or not last night, Monday night, we talked about relative to the, to Montessori, is that our assessment of their, of their program as a partner in four K has been top-notch.
Yeah, it is. It is. Yeah. And, and that was one of the issues with this other program. I mean, they can, they, they can do whatever testing we need. So we're, we're.
Okay. Mr. Edlund?
I wouldn't like getting too far off topic on this, but to, to Mr. O'Brien's point, I thought that we provided the curriculum and the, and the staff for the K four program.
Not, not all staff. Montessori has a specific curriculum, but it meets our needs, meets, meets our standards. A Model Three program has the teacher and the, the, the school is separate. We simply contract for their services. The Model Two is they're building our teacher. But the curriculum, they all have to meet our standards. They have to meet the, the minimal standards that we have. So it, there might be slight differences in the curriculum, but overall, they, they have certain things they have to meet.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And that concludes the CNI committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty fifteen.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink.
You're welcome.
Moving on to our Human Resources Committee, the chairperson is Mr. Edlund.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one agenda item tonight, and that is the approval of the employee handbook revision. The proposed language regarding teacher evaluation provides information on the district's process for carrying out teacher evaluation. It identifies the steps leading up to a, to transition into a direct assistance plan when necessary. I move to approve the employee handbook revision.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Mann. Discussion? All right, Sue, why don't you take your little call?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Robert Brusink.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our Policy Committee, given by Ms. Mann.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two action items tonight and two discussion items. The first action item is potential new policy thirty-three fifty post issuance of debt policy. Per the district auditors and legal counsel, the district has been advised to adopt general policies for overall post issuance tax and continuing disclosure compliance. The policy language was recommended by our legal counsel. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? All right, Sue, please take the vote.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Robert Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Pat?
Okay, revisions to policy sixty-one forty-five point seven G, Guidelines for Field Trips. The current field trip policy does not include the financial assistance form, form as part of the permission form from the parent or guardian. The language added to this policy would require this form. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Second, seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
I only say it's, it's about time we got to this point, because we, we've been struggling with this issue for years.
Yes, we have.
You, you took the words right off.
About all of it, Joe. I've got a lot of years of struggling with it.
Yes.
But, good.
And it's my understanding, if I may.
Dismissed, sir.
That those forms will not come to us if those, if these things are not all included. So that's going to save a lot of time.
So they need, they all need to be submitted properly, or we.
Right, or we won't get them.
They will not come before, before the committee.
That's right.
They'll not make it out of Ryan's office if they're not.
And, and I think that's probably a really good.
Right, because we end up with a stack about this big, and we went through almost every one, because there were pieces, little pieces missing. But nonetheless, they were missing, so they were incomplete. So this is going to save us a lot of time, and save the teachers a lot of time, too.
All right. Are we ready to take the vote on revisions to policy number sixty-one forty-five, seven G Guidelines for Field Trip? Sue?
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Robert Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Pat?
We have one discussion item tonight, it's revisions to policy fifty-one twenty-one grading policy. Currently, students who take an AP class receive weighted credit for this class. The proposed language before you adds the rigor of the College Board AP test in order to earn the weighted credit for the class. We will bring this item forward for action at the April full board meeting. So please read it over, and if you have any questions, contact Mr. Gray or myself, or any member of the committee.
Dr. Langel?
Hi, thank you, Pat, and I think this is good. I did just want to ask, as, as I read this two days ago, I missed it if it's here, and forgive me if I missed it. But it had come up at some point in our discussion, maybe a month ago, about the cost of these AP tests. And is our policy going to indicate that there will be funding available? So if a student takes an AP course, that they can get funding to take that test?
Depending on their financial position. How much, I don't know, because, you know, that's something we have to work out. It's all going to depend on the, the situation. I mean, we haven't, we haven't declared a, we haven't declared an exact rule at this point. But we do recognize that that is an issue, and, you know, that's something that we need to work through with our principles.
Okay, will our language reflect that that would be?
It, it will, once we get.
Part of the policy? Okay, that's the only question.
Exact language worked out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Brusink?
Ms. Mann, it sounds like, you know, when we bring it back to committee, that we might want to consider some language about cost.
Yeah, I think we can have that written up before.
Yes.
Our next meeting, which happens to be March seventeenth at five thirty.
Yep, thank you.
That completes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mann. Moving on to our Technology Committee, chaired by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. And our next committee is Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I used to enjoy being Technology Committee Chair. Before the FNF Chair. Yeah, those were the days, yeah.
I was going to say something, but I thought your actions and your, your, all, all of the things would speak for themselves.
Yeah. As you can see, tonight, we have a lot to cover before we start, so we can feel good at the start. I think this is the most productive school board year I have ever had.
I would agree.
As a city member of the board. We've done so many things, and, and, and this is the last, I consider this the end of our school board year, because elections are coming up. But, you know, if you look at it from the field, you know, Field of Dreams, and, and all the way through to our maintenance and facility stuff that we've done, dealing with Waukesha for learning, I mean, you can go on and on. It's a big list, and tonight is the culmination of that big list. So it's going to take us a while, but remember, we accomplished a lot this year.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, yeah. So.
Yes, we did.
Tough enough, people. We're, we'll make it through this. The first action item is elimination of implicit rate subsidy. The committee was presented with a five-year phase out of the implicit rate subsidy currently included in the district's health insurance premiums for all plan participants by phasing in over a five-year period, a self-supporting premium for all active retiree groups. An implicit rate subsidy exists when retirees are allowed to continue in the plan at the same rate as active employees. Though retirees as a group are higher, higher utilizers of the benefits and generate higher claims than the average employee. This results in the premiums being higher overall to subsidize the extra costs generated by retirees. The subsidy results in a thirty million liability to our, to the district as calculated by Millman, our actuary, and is reported as part of our fifty-five point eight million OPEB obligation. The elimination of the subsidy will result in an estimated fifty percent overall increase to retiree premium rates and an eight percent overall decrease to employee rates based on current plan costs and retirement benefits. Now remember, the words are current, so they are subject to change. The subsidy will be reduced by twenty percent increments each year over the next five years. The committee approved the elimination of implicit rate subsidy over a five-year period as proposed, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion?
Question?
Mrs. Brusink?
So, help me, you know, understand the complexities of this, I read it and read it. Does that mean that after five years, there will be no benefit for retirees as far as health insurance?
No, that, that doesn't mean that. What it means is that they will be their own covered employee group, well, they won't be employees, but their own covered group as retirees, and they will pay the premiums as that group. They'll still have, as of now, you know, we have the seventy-five thousand dollars that we draw upon to cover those benefits. They, as of now, that's the intent to continue that program. It will mean that that drawdown will go a little faster, because the rates will be going up.
Sure.
And therefore, we as a district will have to pay more out of that fund to cover their insurance. And they will be paying a higher overall dollar amount on the co-pay. Percentage will be the same as our regular employees, but their, their premium share will be higher because there are higher insurance rates.
Thank you.
So, but that's why we want to phase it in over five years, so the bite isn't quite as big, and it's something they can adjust to. And our hope is that the HSA program, which we'll talk about later, will help build up some money. Of course, if we have people who have high care costs, HSA money kind of goes out as fast as it comes in. But, no, we will not, this does not have anything to do with actually taking away retiree benefits.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, this is, I think it's a classic example of something that is going to appear to people looking at, at it tonight, that we are moving quickly on something. The fact of the matter is, we have had several work sessions on this subject, long work sessions on this subject, to try and have the board have a clear understanding of what's going on here. And I don't want anybody to think that we're, we're trying to rush something through. We've studied it, and then Finance and Facility further studied it. So this has been an in-depth process.
Mr. Edlund?
After careful consideration of the FNF meeting and the discussions that we've had, I, I'm not comfortable in supporting this, and my reasoning is this. What we're doing is we're saying, when you reach retirement age, you're in a group of people that's going to cost us more money. And that's true. However, we don't look at our group policy as some people within the group policy are a higher risk than others. We don't do it based on all of the federal guidelines for discrimination. In this case, we've got a group, group of people who were promised a benefit before they retired, and we're looking at them and saying, well, based on your age, we're going to throw you in a special group, and we're going to charge you more money. And to me, that involves discrimination. And so I, I, I can't base my opinion on any federal court case, or state court case, or anything else other than what the guidelines are when treating employees in cases of discrimination. So I will not be supporting this.
Mr. O'Brien?
Not to address specifically Mr. Edlund's comments, but I wanted, I wanted to be clear, because there's a legal implication here. They don't have a promised benefit. They have a benefit that we're offering them that can be extinguished at any point in time that we choose to. That's the sunset clause that was the reason for the seventy-five thousand. And employees are well, well aware of that, that they don't have a promised benefit there. We have continued that as a board, because that's what we've chosen to do. But there is no promised benefit for our retirees, per se, until the day they retire. And then they have that benefit at the day they retire. And we usually make assurances a year in advance that we will continue that if, I think, those conversations go on with HR quite often. So I just want to be, be clear on that.
Yeah, a small point of clarity, this is not age-based. We're not seeing it this age. This is when it occurs, it's status of employment. And.
Right.
It's important to understand that.
Mrs. Brusink?
But when you talk about status of employment, if somebody doesn't work, you know, maybe more than fifteen years, they probably, or ten years, they wouldn't, I don't think, be eligible for all of those benefits anyway, would they?
Correct.
So it does have something to do with the time of your life when really you need insurance more than any other time of your life. It's when you, after you retire, as you age, and you'll be paying more money. So I'm having a hard time supporting this too.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just to make, you know, one of the things I have studied as part of this, and I've asked for extra data from Lori and Chris on this, is, you know, our employees are working longer.
Oh, yeah.
And that is part of what's going on here, is that because of, as is the general population, I know quite often some board members talk about, let's compare this to the general population. What goes for them? Well, the general population's working longer, and so our teachers are working longer. People are staying healthier longer, and a lot of teachers want to continue to teach until where this insurance is still covered. So on the whole, a big portion of that seventy-five thousand that we allocate now goes to healthcare. Before, it used to be split between healthcare and part of the, yeah, actuarial reduction. Now, our actuary deduction portion is very small compared to what it used to be. So now, all those dollars tend to go to the healthcare side. So I think the last, the first group of people that had the seventy-five thousand, after five years, we maybe have three or four of them that are winding off the system. So they actually get almost five years of healthcare, or more, sometimes seven, depends, seven or eight, depending upon how long and which policy they take. And then they also get off that seventy-five thousand supplemental coverage relative to Medicare if we have, if they still have funds left. Is that correct, Miss Edlin, I believe? So it's turned out to be a good benefit for our teachers, and it's still being preserved. But the cost, the actuary cost of that benefit is much higher than the seventy-five thousand that we allocated. And when we set up the seventy-five thousand, our thoughts were is that we capped the cost at seventy-five thousand. That turns out not to be true because we're actually subsidizing it with the implicit subsidy above the seventy-five thousand. So all we're doing is correcting something that we intended to have in the first place.
Mr. Edlin?
As I was deliberating the pros and cons of this since Monday, and the question of, in my mind, that came up about age, was the fact that in order to retire and collect a state pension, you have to obtain a certain age.
That's right.
And therefore, the whole question of age and this group of people began to become something that I had to personally deliberate. And that's why I have a problem with this.
Okay. Ms. Madden?
I worked for Waukesha County for many years, and that's exactly what they do with the retired employees. They negotiate for us for an insurance policy, but it is separate from the working employees. It's worked out fine, frankly.
And that's common in the private practice also?
That's correct.
In private practice. And sometimes there's even no benefits, a lot of times, in the private sector for retirees.
Right.
That's it. You're done. You're not an employee. See you later.
I would just.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes, I would just like to ask a question. In the top box where it says, a year five, total family premium, and there's an amount there, is that per month?
Yes.
Yes.
But they don't, they don't pay that themselves. That's the total cost.
The total cost of the policy.
They only pay their percentage of that, which is either eight or twelve.
They pay a percentage of that, okay.
Right. We pay the rest of it, out of that seventy-five thousand account. Our taxpayers do it.
All right. Are we ready to take the vote? We're looking at approving the elimination of the implicit rate subsidy for our health insurance.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
No.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven, was it seven-one?
Okay, thank you.
I thought I was counting there, but I lost track for a moment. Mr. O'Brien?
These items had a lot of good discussion at FNF, so I expect them to have a lot of good discussion tonight at the board meeting. And so, the next one had some too. So it's called the High Deductible Health Plan with an HSA contribution. The committee was presented a plan designed for implementing a high deductible health plan with a health savings account contribution. This is the same plan that was presented and discussed at the February twenty-fourth board workshop. The high deductible health plan includes a district-provided HSA account at one-half of the employee out-of-pocket maximum. This means that the HSA could be thirteen-hundreds for a single plan and twenty-six-hundred for a family plan. The plan would be an option for employees in year one effective nine-one-fifteen, and would replace the current PPO health plan, health benefit plan, effective nine-one-sixteen. The committee approved the high deductible health plan with the HSA contribution effective nine-one-fifteen, and phased out of the current PPO health plan, benefit plan, effective nine-one-sixteen, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffery. Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
Thank you. I just want to recognize that this is something that nearly every employer is going to in a high deductible health plan. It's not uncommon at all, and it's unfortunate. Everybody's trying to scramble to beat the two thousand eighteen deadline, where your health plan's going to be hit with a rather large federal tax unless you keep your costs of your health plan under a certain dollar amount. And this is just one of the tools that's being used to be able to meet that federal mandate.
Dr. Langel?
I have a question, and I only could watch part of the meeting. But the bottom right-hand corner on my chart, there must be some great reason, and I'm sure you can tell me, Kurt, why all the comparisons that go across three columns only go across two there?
I have a little bit of a chart here.
I just want to point out that third column is the Safe Harbor Plan.
Right.
Which is not the plan we're discussing tonight. The one that is on the table for discussion is the Middle Plan.
I understand that.
The Safe Harbor Plan was approved last month, and that is based on employee income. That's why there isn't comparisons down below. It costs nine-point-five percent of their income to participate in that plan.
So you're saying that we should just take that third column off the table? We're not even thinking about it?
It's already been approved. So it's just there, so you know that that's the full array of all of our plans when it.
I think I can, if I can allow, if you give me, I think what we're talking about is comparison between our current plan for our employees and this new plan for our employees. That current plan for our employees that we, actually, the only one we expect them to take is not the Safe Harbor Plan. So there's no need to really do a comparison with the Safe Harbor Plan.
Okay.
Because the Safe Harbor Plan is a compliance plan, and we're not expecting our employees to take that plan. We're expecting them to take either of these two plans.
Okay.
And that's why you should have that comparison for either of these two plans.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct, Ms. Clifton?
And without the compliance plan, we run the risk of actually paying fees
That's right.
to the federal government if we didn't have it, so.
Right. So even though it's approved, I'm x-ing it out basically because we're not talking about it.
Right. It's not, it's not part of the comparison.
Thank you.
It just adds another level of complexity that would be completely unnecessary.
Got it.
Mr. Edlin?
I wanted to bring up a point that I really struggled with at FNF on this particular issue, and that was the fact that we're going to be giving a health savings account contribution to our employees of twenty-six hundred dollars, even with the, with the high deductible of five thousand two hundred dollars. I struggle with this for a couple of reasons. One of them is that, starting this year, employees got a benefit where the district picked up a new federal tax that was implemented, that cost the district a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. We referred to it as the belly button tax, which was sixty-three dollars. The amount was lowered. Ms. Clifton was able to find a way to come up with a better number for us. Even such, the district picked up this brand-new federal tax that got slapped on everybody who participates in a health plan. The number we were looking at was sixty-three dollars per belly button participating in the plan. So that means if you have a family of five, it's five times sixty-three. The district picks up all five of the members of your family. So that was one benefit. Then we also created a clinic in cooperation with the county and the city. Now, the clinic is designed to save us money on our healthcare costs, but at the same time, it is going to be an added benefit to the employees who are having a lot of first-tier healthcare costs covered. So basic prescriptions, which, you know, your blood pressure medication, other medications that can come prepackaged are essentially free. Your office visits are, I don't know, copay is five dollars or something in that magnitude. So there's, you know, that's another level of benefit that I think if you went out in the workplace today, very few employers are offering a clinic, though many more may go in that direction. And I just want to point out that that's one criticism from the private sector about the public sector is that, you know, we would always criticize the fact that the health insurance policy was so high, and that employees weren't paying anything, so they would run to the doctor for a sniffle, because it was covered, essentially. So, you know, we're still kind of at that level with this clinic situation, because it doesn't essentially cost anything. But I understand the concept of getting employees to go there because, you know, what the heck, if you're not going to pay anything for it, and it saves us money on our insurance plan, that's a good thing. However, that brings me to the point of the HSA contribution being twenty-six hundred to help offset the five thousand two hundred dollar deductible. We're already providing that first tier of coverage, so I struggle with this number. I think it's rather high. Now, I understand that this is a rollover number, and it goes with the employee should they decide not to stay with the district. And I believe in portability of benefits. But the fact that we've added a clinic into this equation already, already saves our employees a lot of money for fundamental coverage. You know, later on in the FNF committee's report, we're going to hear about, you know, the potential financial impacts that this district is going to potentially go through with the state budget, where we may end up having to find three million dollars' worth of cuts somewhere. But at the same time, we're handing all our employees a twenty-six hundred dollar check. So I really struggled with that. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote, even as of this moment, because I just think that, you know, once again, we're doing our best to try and struggle with the realities of the cost of healthcare. And we're trying to be fair to our community, and we're trying to be fair to our employees. You know, and where do you land? This whole change in dynamics of healthcare is, you know, very upsetting to a lot of people in the private sector. I ran across a guy the other day at Carroll College, a maintenance worker there, who nearly had to file bankruptcy because he couldn't come up with the five thousand dollar deductible. You know, there's some people out there who just don't make a lot of money that can't pay the five thousand dollar deductible annually, and they don't have a clinic. So they're going without healthcare. Now, that's the sad part of this whole thing, is it's supposed to make healthcare available to everybody. At the same time, if you don't have the money to be able to afford the healthcare, you're not going to go through it. So, thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
You know, not to go into it too much, but I'd like to say that since, you know, we've worked really hard to lower our healthcare costs, you know, to the point where we went to battle with the union prior to Act Ten and switched providers. And if you look at the long-term savings that this board has pursued in cooperation with administration, and mostly through Mr. Gray's efforts, he's been our, he's been our lead man in pushing us through. We've reduced our premium cost by about five thousand dollars per covered on a family plan. So we've done a very good job of knocking down those costs over the years. And this high deductible healthcare plan is projected to knock down additional costs, even with the twenty-six hundred dollar carrot to employees to encourage them to take the plan. There is a risk associated with that, that we may not save as much as the twenty-six hundred dollars generates, but the projections are that we will save that and more. When you look at educators, and, you know, we had one here tonight, and I, and I think she made a very good point, let's not forget, you know, that there's only so many dollars an educator makes too, like the person at Carroll College. And when we raise high deductible healthcare plans, and they don't have the money, it's painful for them. So the fact that we do offer this twenty-six hundred dollars helps with those people who have these high claim costs. Now, there's people who won't have the high cost that will build up an HSA account. The HSA account, to me, is an opportunity for us to eventually eliminate the OPEB liability. If we can eventually build up HSA accounts to where that heavy burden of the OPEB liability is no longer a heavy burden, that would be good too. So I think we should start at this level. I would have been even in favor of a higher level, to be honest with you, if it helped us reduce our future OPEB liability. But this is the original plan that I think was presented to us some time back. It was a plan that I eventually bought into with some resistance, and I think it's just a, it seems to be the right plan for the district. It has some risk involved. It may not be as severe as what we see in the private sector, but we're not in a race to the bottom when it comes to benefits for our employees. We look at the total package, and if you look at the total package, our employees have not gained much in the last four to five years in total compensation. In fact, most of them have gone backwards. So I can't think the private sector has seen most of their employees go backwards over the last four or five years like we've had here. So if we're trying to compare to the private sector, it's really hard to do, but you can compare in other ways, you know.
All right. The, this board has worked extremely hard over the past half dozen years, where not only have we switched carriers, we've self-insured, we've provided the clinic. Here, we're looking at another cost-saving step. So this is, this is a cost-saving step for our district to help balance our budget. It's an important one to help balance our budget. It's also important to be able to attract and retain good employees. And so we're trying to balance out a number of different factors here. This plan does mimic more closely to what the private sector is doing at this time. Maybe we're a little bit behind here, but it's coming close to mimicking that. So people are starting to be able to relate to it in the private sector a little bit better. The savings, the savings that are predicted for this particular plan is thirteen-hundred-and-six dollars for a family plan and four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So we're moving, again, we're trying to be cost-conscious with the dollars we have available. We, some of those savings do go to the employee too, so we share in that as we bring our costs down. And keep in mind, we're only in our second year of our self-insured program. We've done exceptionally well. We're building up our reserve. We're on track, Lori, to build that up properly. So this, this is another component to a very complex transition of balancing, not only, not only saving costs on healthcare, which are rising, we're, we're in the process of trying to now have our employees make good decisions about healthcare. We have the wellness clinic to be healthier. We've priced that out properly for them to use that, to access it even during the day if necessary in those emergency situations. I think that's a, that's a really good step. Now, we're hoping is that people are making good decisions as this plan changes, as to when to go to the doctor. Don't go to the doctor for every little sniffle, but go when you need to go. We also don't want them to not to go because the plan, they're afraid to spend money. And that's where getting a little bit more money put into the health savings account each year helps to balance that out. So we're trying to balance a lot of number of factors, and they're, they're opposing factors at times. I think this does a really good job. I am in favor of this. Other comments? Take the vote, Sue, to, the vote is on approving a high deductible health plan with an HSA contribution effective nine-one-fifteen, phase out of the current PPO health benefit effective nine-one-sixteen.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven-one, Sue. Kurt?
Okay, our next action item is participation in the southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance contract. The committee was presented with a resolution for the district's participation in the southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Note, that's this school year. The southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance provides legislative counsel regarding matters of mutual interest with twenty-eight other districts in our region on constitutional and legislative decisions related to issues that affect schools.
decisions related to issues that affect schools. This is an organization that the district has been a participant in and with for many years. The committee approved the resolution for the district's participation in the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance for the 2014-15 school year, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion?
I just have a simple question. If we pass this, and I'm probably thinking we will, even if it's a little retro, it says dues check one. Do we pass something where nothing's been checked, or do we care?
I don't understand.
Well, it's on page three, and I just wondered where we are with this. It doesn't look like it makes a big difference, but it sounds like we need to make a decision there. And I just don't see any checks, so I just wondered.
We had a recommended amount, committee, I know that.
Yeah, it was $3,000.
So we don't want to do the chapter 220.
No, we're not.
So check number one, and then when we pass it, that's what we're checking.
Yes.
No, I didn't think so, but it isn't checked, and I don't like to pass something that isn't specifically checked.
Yep, it is $3,000.
Before the last one, there's a listing of who falls into what column, and you'll see we are only under the $3,000.
Okay, well, that makes perfect sense, but it just looked pretty open.
But you're correct, the document does need one of those boxes.
Thank you, Dr. Langel. It is for $3,000.
Yes.
Yep, and that price, I think, has been the same, I think, ever since the organization came to fruition, and I believe we've participated every year since, from the beginning. I believe it's also the same legal counsel that represents this again this year, so, and they've done an excellent job in the past, so. Ms. Brusink?
Yes, what, why is more public schools described as in-kind?
Because they provide an individual that actually does work. They have a government relationship.
They have their own.
Who does quite a bit of work directly for this organization.
They probably actually do more than $3,000 worth of work to keep track of it.
That benefits us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I mean, the motion at FNF was to approve the $3,000 dues. The resolution you're seeing at the, is basically background information. It's not a resolution that applies to us specifically. It tells us what the $3,000 is for.
Okay, are we ready to take the vote? Sue?
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0, Sue. Kurt?
Okay, that takes care of our action items. We're going to move right to the information items. Monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through for the month of February 2015. In the month of $15,420,029 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $9,848,479 was expended during the month. $934,496 was reported in the special education revenue, and $2,385,922 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection. The district received a second installment of property taxes from municipalities for the 2014 tax levy, which represents 74% of the total amount levied, as compared to 73% at the same time last year. Next information item, moving right along, is the 2015-2016 budget update. The committee was updated on the 2015-2016 budget projection. Last month, we were updated on the impact that the governor's proposed state budget would have on our revenue. This month expenditures have been included. The district could expect a $3.7 million deficit, assuming a roll-up budget. The assumptions include wage growth at CPIU of 1.68%, the maximum base wage increase permitted for union negotiations, and no changes in benefits. It does not assume any loss of students or funds due to vouchers or new charter schools. This is a status quo budget developed for discussion and planning purposes only. This item will be kept as an agenda item, and the board will continue to be updated as the budgeting process proceeds. And again, we're talking about the governor's budget, and the governor himself says he expects the legislature to modify his budget recommendations, so let's not panic yet, people, but, okay. Our third information item is the Town of Brookfield Tax and Congressional Financing District. Number one, Mr. Como, board representative appointed to the Joint Review Board, updated the committee on the status of the Town of Brookfield TID number one. The Joint Review Board reconvened on March 9th to approve a resolution to extend the final TID payment for one more year. Moving right along to the next information item, Energy Projects Update. The committee was given an update on the status of facility and site improvements projects included in the performance contract issued to Siemens Industries in October 2014. The domestic water retrofit and mechanical installation projects have been awarded, and RFPs for other projects are in various stages of completion. To date, the projects have come in $66,000 under budget for the number of projects that we've done so far, that we've left, did so far for. Now off to discussion items. We are, we had a nice discussion on the local education option partnership with Montessori School of Waukesha, which Mr. Gray covered some in his report tonight. The committee was presented with information on a possible pilot program with Montessori School of Waukesha. The Montessori people were in attendance, but they didn't have to comment at all. We were, but we were giving, they were there. The pilot would consist of about 30 kindergarten students and would provide students with access to a private school without participation in the voucher program. A future board workshop will be held to discuss the specifics once the parties have met to formalize, and we talked about scheduling the workshop earlier tonight. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Sir, any comments on the Montessori partnership at this time? That is a discussion.
About that work session, right?
Yep. Dr. Langel?
I just want to thank the finance committee and specifically its chair because you're so valuable to this board and maybe just to me in particular, as I look through these numbers, you know, from Friday to Wednesday, and I look through them again, and then I look through them again, and I'm just so grateful to have a good finance committee on this board to go through everything with a fine-tooth comb and explain things when some of us don't altogether, altogether get them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Langel. Mrs. Brusink?
Mr. O'Brien had mentioned earlier some of the things that this board has accomplished, and I really appreciate that he did that because one thing, one of the things we don't do is blow our horn and remind the community how we save the money and how we improve programs and how we improve staff and all the wonderful things that we do. And just personally, I want each one of you that sits on this board to know how much I appreciate what each one of you gives to this board, the intelligent leadership and the understanding of the very complex issues that we deal with. Like you pointed out, Dr. Langel, finance and facilities is, it's very complex, and you need to know something about finance, et cetera. So I too am appreciative of the FNF Committee, but I think all of our committees do amazing work for this community, so I just thought it would be very important to follow up with that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your report, Mr. O'Brien. We do have other business tonight. Our compensation committee has met a couple of times, and we do have an update and some action items. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not done yet. We have the compensation committee report, and that's going to probably cause more discussion because it's important to discuss. One of our biggest expenses is employee compensation, so we are very pleased to report. We are bringing before you tonight approval of the 2014-2015 base wage increase that we have negotiated with the Education Association of Waukesha. The compensation committee of the School District of Waukesha began negotiating the 2014-2015 contract with the Education Association of Waukesha on February 3rd, 2015. They also met on February 16th and February 23rd, 2015, where a tentative agreement was reached. DAW recommended a tentative agreement to the bargaining unit, which voted in favor of the proposal on March 5th and 6th, 2015. The base wage increase is $257 per full-time teacher for the 2014-2015 school year. Part-time teachers receive a prorated amount. I move to approve the 2014-2015 base wage increase for the Education Association of Waukesha.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mann. Discussion?
I just have a point of order, and we're probably fine, but somebody getting this agenda or looking it up online, these aren't actually listed as action items in our agendas, so we're just assuming that people know that.
Not the word approval.
Well, I know, but usually they have to be listed as action items, and I'm just asking.
It's under A. All the A items are the action items on the agenda? Under every committee?
Yeah, usually they are, but they usually also say action, and if we don't, it's okay with me, but I just want to make sure. We're doing this right, because usually you have to say action if you're taking action. And if it's okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll move forward with it then.
That's fine. You're okay with that.
Mrs. Brusink?
So I guess I thought it would be an action item because we were looking for approval. Approval is action, so, I mean, that's just my take on it, but that's a good point that you raised.
I see what you're saying, though, Dr. Langel.
We just have to be careful.
Point noted.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Thank you.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, it was seconded by Ms. Mann. Discussion?
We studied this last week, right?
I would just add, if we're not going to have discussion from anyone, I'd just like to add a few comments. I think everybody was very pleased with the bargaining environment this time. There was, I think this is the first time we've completed in three meetings in one month, and the atmosphere between the groups was, it was a normal bargaining. I mean, we both went back and forth and talked about, you know, it was about building some trust, actually, and what came out of this request from them when they accepted our offer, which was pretty much what we had tendered, a 0.5%, which works out to the $257 per employee, was their request that we continue to work with them, with our teachers, not necessarily the DAW themselves, but with our teachers, develop a kind of collaborative relationship that they saw us developing in bargaining. And they realized that the real opportunity to define their benefits exists outside of bargaining nowadays. We're only covering a small portion of it in bargaining, just a sliver. The rest of it's covered by the next item on the agenda, and so they have no control over the next item on the agenda. They only have the control over the part that we say is the, basically, the delta. And we, and they have to trust us that the delta's correct, and we have to kind of demonstrate it to them, but at the end, they still have to trust us. So we're in an environment now at post-ACT 10 where trust is very important with our employees, whether it's any of our employees, administrators, teachers, custodians, anybody. We aren't relying on a union now to govern how we relate to our employees. We're relying on ourselves and our own personal accountability as a board and as administration, and them as employees, professionals in our district. And I think it's important to recognize that as we move through this new phase of post-ACT 10 bargaining.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, otherwise, we have a motion on the floor to approve, to approve the 2014-2015 base wage increase of point, of $257 per full-time teacher. Sue, will you take the roll call on that?
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0. Kurt?
Okay, moving to the next, and I'm going to announce this so that everybody's pleased. Next and last exact action item for the meeting tonight, which is not too bad, 9:05 for everything we did tonight. It's approval of the 2014-2015 supplemental wages for the teacher and employee, the teacher-employee group. A salary schedule is not subject to negotiation. In fact, it would be a violation of ACT 10 to negotiate the schedule with the Education Association of Waukesha. However, using feedback gained from recently conducted stay interviews, we learned that teachers desire a clear pathway to greater earnings. While each year the Board of Education has approved base and supplementary salary increases, teachers have been unclear about how additional salary can be earned through material service or performance. However, it's important to note that the Board of Education would have, would have to annually approve any future schedule and employee movement, employment movement or progression on a step or lane in a salary schedule. The compensation committee proposes to place all teachers on the proposed salary schedule in 2014-2015. The salary schedule admittedly a work in progress should be considered a precursor to a strategic compensation plan that uses a variety of measures such as career ladders and performance. Because the district has not used a salary schedule in over three years, teachers will be placed at a cell that is at least 257,000 higher than the current salary, the amount we just approved in the previous resolution. Teachers without a master's degree are generally placed in the B columns. Steps do not necessarily equate to years of service. Instead, employees are placed on steps that reflect a higher schedule than current. I move to approve the 2014-15 supplemental wages for the teacher-employee group.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Baumgart?
It should be clear, we're talking about year 2014-2015, so this is a retroactive situation.
That's correct.
Where are we with the next, I mean, you know?
We can't, we can't move on with the next until we get past this one.
Oh, that's, but are plans being made to get that rolling quickly?
Yep. We hope to have something, again, as you recall, one of the goals that I was given was to nail down the compensation plan. The only issue is educator effectiveness, how that goes into it. Now, that's been delayed for another year by DPI. And if anyone has, is surprised about that, we'll talk later, but it is, that's delayed, so we, I don't know how it's going to impact this. We may have to come up with a, with a interim plan for that piece of it, but I know, I know Chris is very interested also in nailing this down because the hiring season's coming up as well.
Yeah, the, you know, for roughly three years now, we've been working with our stakeholders, all the stakeholders of the district, looking at how a strategic compensation plan can come together. There's a lot of factors in that. We're starting to boil that down to a number of different areas, applied knowledge, leadership, and performance are kind of the three major, major categories that we're looking at and that we've found as we've had these discussions. It's very complex, have had a lot of input, have had a lot of good input from all of our stakeholders. Now we're trying to compile something that's going to actually work. So now here, the next discussion is how do we get this all to work? Probably not going to roll out everything all at once. We're probably going to have to phase some things in, but the whole goal here is, is to attract and retain the best talent that we can. That's been the charge that's been given to our superintendent and to our, to Chris Hedstrom, who's in charge of our human resources, and we need, we need to compete well with all of the surrounding districts. That's what, one of the things that ACT 10 has brought about, and it's pretty complex when you've used a system for roughly, I don't know, 100 years or more, 150 years or more. We're changing that system right now. It's a pretty big change, but I do think we've done a lot of good research, and we're at a point where we can start to put some pieces together that will make sense so that we can attract and retain the best employees that we possibly can. And they're the bread and butter for our district, right? Without, without the best teachers, without good teachers, the people who are in the classroom, day in and day out, where the rubber meets the road, without them, students are nowhere. We don't have student achievement, so we need the best teachers we can find, and they do a heck of a job every single day. We should be proud of the job that they do, and we need to make sure that we attract and retain the best, so that's the best that we can do for the children who come to our school district, and it's a lot that goes into it. So, but we're going to start that. If we approve this, we're going to, we're just going to roll right into that 2015-2016 plan. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I mean, this is, you know, if you're going to have stay interviews, which we do, and that's something that we've asked to try and stem the tide of losing some of our better educators to all the other districts that want Waukesha teachers. This is a great place to become a great teacher, and everybody knows that, all around us. They would love to have Waukesha's teachers. And so those stay interviews were very clear, and one of the biggest champions of doing this was from the stay interviews and the feedback to Ms. Hedstrom. I also know that one, that, you know, DAW shared with us that it was also something when they polled their members independently of us, at a very overwhelming majority, they said what was most important to them, and it was the salary.
said what was most important to them, and it was the salary schedule. So, um, I believe we haven't been given the final, we were never given the final numbers, but I believe that, um, the previous thing we just agreed on was approved overwhelmingly by the teachers because it was their understanding that the supplemental was going to result in a salary schedule, which was as important to them as anything we could do. Now, uh, I think it's important to note that this is not, and it's kind of hard to explain this, but this is not a pre-Act Ten salary schedule, this is a post-Act Ten salary schedule. We have all the tools, uh, that is afforded to us under Act Ten, still within the salary schedule. We have the options to, uh, advance people or not advance people, either through steps or lanes on a year-to-year basis. It, in, on how they advance on steps hasn't been defined yet. Perception is it'll be years of service, but that hasn't been clearly stated. There is a block as to how many steps they can go before they actually have to, um, be moved by administration to a higher pay level or to a different lane. Uh, that's what we call that extra cell block. Never act, happened before Act Ten. So this schedule, unlike the schedule we had prior to Act Ten, the schedule we had prior to Act Ten was financially destructive. We all know that. We got rid of that schedule. This schedule is a tool that works for the, for the school district and works for our teachers. It works for our teachers if we're responsible with this schedule. Okay, we have to be responsible, like we talked about earlier, in how we implement the schedule, but it does give us the tools to deal with the situations that come down the pike that aren't really favorable, and, um, we're hoping it won't be too bad, but this does give us flexibility in retaining that.
Yeah, Kurt, Kurt, thank you for that clarity. Sometimes schedules can just look like schedules, uh, and this is completely different, and the key word is, is how do you move through the, the schedule? And that's really what the strategic compensation, uh, is, is going to be all about. Ms. Edlin?
I, I agree with a lot of what Mr. O'Brien says, um, but we also have to be mindful of a couple of things. First of all, under Act Ten now, when we negotiate, um, base salary, it's a guaranteed raise every year. It's based on the Consumer Price Index, so, uh, I don't think that's gone down in my lifetime, I don't know. Um, so it's a guaranteed raise every year. We also have to look at the total package, the benefits, the health insurance costs, retirement costs. Salary schedule is not going to be what it was, a guaranteed increase just because you've been in the same classroom teaching the same thing year after year after year. There has to be some performance measures in place, you know, and that's, that's, the only thing I want to caution everybody about is that we're going to have escalating costs over the years regardless of the salary schedule, and, you know, looking long-term, um, we just have to be careful in what kind of conditions we're going to put on that. And I, I'm not so sure that, how this is going to fit in with an additional, uh, strategic compensation where we're talking about potentially giving out bonuses and, and whatnot, you know, all the money's got to come from somewhere, and we're seeing a reduction in the amount of revenue that we're going to have as a district, not an increase.
It's, it's, it's not in addition to, it's within the schedule, so how you move through the schedule is going to, that's, so it's the, it's, it's, the strategic compensation plan isn't going to be a bunch of numbers just tossed on top of the schedule in addition to what you see on it. It's how you move through the schedule, and the supplemental is built into the schedule. Does that make sense?
It does. My last discussion on, that I recall on our strategic compensation was that we were looking at possibly rewarding individual schools for exceeding a particular performance base that we set out for them. So does that mean that everybody is going to be moved up the salary schedule because of that? I don't know, I was looking...
Those are the details that, that we need to work out.
Yep.
Yep, and there's complexities to them, Steve, absolutely.
I'm just saying we have to be mindful of, you know, how much we're going to give out in the, in the, in the picture of the total package for our employees.
You are correct.
Too often in the past, we only looked at the salaries and not necessarily the total package.
Well, every year we have to look at everything and come up with a balanced budget, so we're forced to do it, actually, so. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I might add, you know, there's a lot of work to do post this. I mean, and I know Ms. Hedstrom's trying, trying to wrap her mind around all of it, but, uh, I can say this gives them the tools to do a lot of things incentive-wise with employees, up to thirteen different items. If you were starting at the lower corner and had to work through the whole thing, up to thirteen different times you can incent, you can offer incentives, most likely it'd be five to seven, okay? You, you could get a lane movement or something like that, but, um, it does encourage, um, higher education, but higher education's controlled by the district. That's the plan, that's part of what we're planning, um, but we haven't defined that yet. So, um, that's yet to be defined, and any additional benefits, compensation, strategic compensation-wise, also have not been excluded as of yet, but the main thing is that the, the schedule and, is something that provides transparency for our employees, tries transparency for anyone who's monitoring us, our taxpayers. The way we were doing it the last three years, it wasn't transparency, it was kind of, why are you doing this? How are you doing it? It was confusing, and this, this will help us a great deal in communicating how we're paying our employees.
Ms. Edlin?
I wouldn't say that it wasn't transparent. What I would say is there was no model to follow, because with Act Ten, we were starting with a blank chalkboard, marker board.
And, and that's really part of our research, too, is what our other districts doing. There's been a number of examples that, um, Ms. Hedstrom has brought to our attention that we've been, uh, looking at, too. It's really, um, we have great flexibility here, and we are really going down a road that hasn't been really defined, like it had been for decades and decades, so, uh, there's a lot of, lot of work to do. Also, keep in mind, we will adjust each and every year, and we have that chance to go through, again, the budgeting process every year, and where we're forced to balance everything out, so we'll have to see where that leads and what, what additional revenues are and which ones come in, which ones don't. There's all those things that need to balance, so. Any other comments? So we're, we're, we have a motion on the floor to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen supplemental wages for the, uh, teacher employee group. Sue, will you take the roll?